America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One state under God, one and invisible.
Thank you, gentlemen. Well, with that, for Ms. President, I will call the meeting to order. First up, Angie, do we have any citizens' comments? Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meetings in Commissioner's Court on December 18th, 2018.
Hearing non-judged, I move that we approve the minutes for the Commissioner's Court regular session of December the 18th as presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Giesling, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the minutes as presented. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes before with one abstention. Item number two, consider and take action on refund requests for overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector. Good morning. Morning.
I have thirty-three refunds this morning totaling $140,328.76. I have one refund that is due to an adjustment they granted a disabled veterans exemption, and most of these are paid, were paid by a title company before the mortgage company paid, with the exception of one or two that were paid by the property owner.
Questions?
What was the amount for you, sir? One hundred and forty?
Mm-hmm. We only have backup up to a hundred and thirty.
What we had in our packet was...
There were two refunds that were added. I don't think they're in that total that was on the first email.
Okay.
The second email.
Yeah. There were two other refunds that were added for Athens Tractor and Chemical Analysis. I think she just sent those.
Oh, okay, they were attached.
Yes.
I didn't know.
Yeah, they had to be added to that amount.
Okay, that was confusing due to the fact that one of them was, that had additional information with the one from Athens Tractor was also in the list. Okay. I have other questions, so do you want me to continue?
If you would like.
I'll just pick one at random here. Number eleven, it says it was paid by the title company. I'm confused on how that could be, since the property hasn't changed ownership since 1998.
They may have refinanced it. I don't know. I just know a title company paid the taxes.
Because, I mean, the same thing is true for number thirteen. They've owned that property since 2011. Number nineteen, they've owned it since 1993. Then there's two big ones at the bottom, thirty and thirty-one. Those have been owned by the same folks since 2004. I'd like to ask about number ten. It says it was paid by the owner. The refund is $3,000, but the actual tax value is $6,483.
Right, $3,000 of what CoreLogic paid was paid by the owner. Owner had paid $3,000 before CoreLogic sent in the payment.
Ah. Is it fair for me to assume that we're refunding the full amount because of the disabled veteran?
Yes.
I don't think that is correct.
He has a hundred percent disabled veterans exemption.
I understand that, but everything...
That means no taxes.
Uh, that is on what is homesteaded. If he has, if the property owner is a hundred percent disabled, follows the same guidelines according to the tax code of homestead, therefore, if there's a metal building or a second living area or a boathouse, or those are not exempt. It's no different than when we freeze taxes. We freeze taxes, it's on what is homesteaded, not...
All of his improvement value is under his homestead.
Boathouse still can't be.
That's what the appraisal district shows, is all their improvement value is under their homestead.
The appraisal district gave me different information, because there's $15,300 that shouldn't have been part of...
I'm just going by the change that they sent us.
I'm just challenging that, because I don't believe it's correct. I would like for you to look into that.
At their 2019, they may have picked up a boathouse, but for 2018, they don't show anything.
The boathouse was built a long time ago, and I can tell you this, I mean, the disability wasn't approved until 12/20 of last year, of eighteen. I'd like for you to look at that one, because I think it's, it's not much. It's not going to pay very much tax, but the thing is, we want to make sure it's consistent for all folks across the board. I mean, I know another individual that has just recently become a hundred percent disabled, and there's a building on his, and that's not part of the tax refund. It hasn't come through yet, but it'll probably be next week. So I would like for you to look at that particular one, number twenty-eight. I have a, kind of a different question. So, once upon a time, and once upon a time Henderson County used to give discounts, so did school districts in a lot of counties throughout Texas. And before I was on the court, the court stopped the early payment discount. It was a discount if you paid by the end of October, and get a lesser discount by the end of November, December, and then it was the full amount in January. And that was one of the reasons we pushed, I believe, we pushed to get these statements out in early October, so that taxpayers could utilize, take advantage of that discount program. Well, it's been discontinued. I don't know why we continued to push to get these statements out in early October, because if you look at these refunds, sixteen of the properties that we're refunding, numbers one, five, six, seven, eight, nine, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-seven, were all title transfers that happened in the month of October. So if the statement hadn't gone out until the first of November, that's still ninety days before payment is due.
Isn't there still one school district that is still... Oh, really?
No. La Pointe was, La Pointe I see was the last school district to do the 321 discount, and they did away with that back in 2010 or 11.
Really? Okay.
Yeah.
That is something that we need to look at doing, because that was part of the reason, that was the reason for the October deadline historically, was because of meeting that deduction.
But I believe there's something also in the tax code about we have to have them out by a certain, so many days before they become delinquent in order for people to have time.
Maybe, that's something that we can pick up and work out.
I think we should look at it, because, I mean, it's understandable. These sixteen refunds, they were paid by the title company and then turned around and paid by the mortgage company or the collection agency for who's ever the actual carrier, First Aid Bank, and CoreLogic collects for First Aid Bank as an example. So, I mean, they went ahead and paid it as well. And all of these were transfers, the sixteen that I mentioned were all transferred in the month of October. And you would have captured that, and the statements would have been corrected. I noticed it also, the last comment, I have, I noticed some of them, the refunds, were slightly less than what they paid. Was this, none of these were related to the error in sending out all of the statements first with the wrong tax rate for the Trinity Valley Community College?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you. I don't know.
Okay. Well, I just noticed that without running the calculations on the change in the tax code, it's a small amount, slightly less than what the tax bill actually is, and we were refunding a lesser amount. I thought maybe that was why some of these refunds, because they went ahead and sent the check the second time. Just wondering.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Like I said, I don't, most of these were paid by a title company. They may have paid off their, they didn't pay off the original statement, because they did get a second file with the corrected amounts. I don't know if they paid some of the difference, that if the title company didn't pay the full amount, they may not have paid the original, or they may have paid off the original statement and not the corrected statement. The CoreLogic may have paid the difference for that.
Commissioner, on that number twenty-eight, would you like to hold that refund until more can be found out about that?
I think we should. I mean, I'm not against, the individual qualifies, been certified. It's just that point that I brought out, I think it needs to be researched. I don't think we, we can go ahead and approve it.
Okay.
Under the proviso that you look into it and advise the court what you find.
In the interest of time, we'll go ahead and move forward. Does anyone else that have any questions? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second his motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the request for overpayment of taxes from Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector. Any further discussion?
Yes, I, there was one other one. The one that you mentioned, that was the addendum, or the additional one, it was Athens Tractor.
Yeah.
What caused that?
Athens Tractor has what's called a vehicle inventory tax that they pay into monthly. When they receive the corrective notice, they paid that corrective notice.
Okay.
And they shouldn't have.
Okay, because the amount was exactly the same that they had paid, and it's exactly, and I didn't, there was no backup. And I do apologize to the court, apologize for boring the audience. There's very little backup that we commissioners receive to understand why we're doing this, and, you know, it takes a lot of time over the weekend to do all the research to find out what it's all about. So I have to ask these questions, especially when I do the research, and I'm still confused of, because it's just a spreadsheet and says, why? I apologize to you, but I have to ask these questions, because it was $140,000 refunds. One other question. I'll just use AISD as an example, because I've never asked this question, I don't know how that works. We collect the taxes for the AISD, money comes into the Henderson County Tax Collector's office in this process. When we find this duplication, have we already dispersed the money to the AISD?
The original payment would have been dispersed to them. Any overpayment doesn't get dispersed to the NIT.
All right, so we don't have to, your office does not have to go back to the AISD now and ask them to refund money?
No.
Okay, so it's all handled internally?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't, I was just wondering if the AISD didn't pay us back, if they...
No. Any overpayment of money, any overages that are above the $10 threshold that have, if the, it's over $10, we automatically refund it. Any refunds, that money actually stays in the tax assessor's account.
All right.
Until the check is cleared, and then it clears out of our account.
Okay, very good. Thank you, I appreciate that. No further questions.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Item number three, consider and take action to transfer a filing cabinet from Injet Health to Roden Bridge Precinct Two. Commissioner Tulli.
Court, we're trying to not really clean up, but organize our...
No, you're needing to clean up some.
Organize our area out where our bill is, where they had a, when the flood was out by the dump, and we're trying to move some desk out, probably seeing the next agenda where we're going to give back some desks, but we're going to be doing this two more times for two more filing cabinets, but these filing cabinets are going to be held for the, all the mechanical and the mechanic's books for the tractors and everything, trucks and everything else that he works on, so there'll be, that's why we're requesting this filing cabinet.
Any questions?
No questions.
No questions, yes.
I make a motion to transfer a filing cabinet from the Injet Health to Roden Bridge Precinct Two.
I'll second his motion. Have a motion by Commissioner Tulli, second by Commissioner Thomas, to transfer a filing cabinet from Injet Health to Roden Bridge Precinct Two. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Item number four, consider and take action to reappoint two members to the Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Five Board of Commissioners, and, oh, excuse me, for two-year terms ending December 31st, 2020, located in Precinct Three.
This is ESD Number Five, which is in the Brownsville area. We got off track on our commissioners, on our board, trying to get that back on track. The board members that are there have all shown a willingness to be back on the board and to work, work for the ESD to help improve things around Brownsville and the ESD Number Five. And two of them I would like to put back, their term ended in December 31st, 18, so theirs, theirs hadn't overlapped any. I'd like for them to be appointed to a two-year term ending December 31st, 2020, and that's Calvin Morris and Larry Samuel Bright. Are there any questions? If none, I move that we appoint two members to the HCS, ESD Number Five Board of Commissioners for two-year terms ending December 31st, 2020, and that is Calvin Morris and Larry Samuel Bright.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tulli, to approve the, or to approve the reappointment of two members, Calvin Morris and Larry Samuel Bright, for ESD Five. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Item five, consider and take action to reappoint three members to the Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Five Board of Commissioners for one-year terms ending December 31st, 2019, in Precinct Three. Commissioner McCam.
And this is, this is to clean up the same problem, and I'm doing it a one-year term where they can have the staggered effect on the board. And these members also expressed willingness to continue on the board, Conley Owens, Roger Berry, and Jim Pallady.
Any questions for Commissioner McCam?
No questions.
No questions.
Seeing there's none, I move that we appoint three members to a one-year term on the HCSD Number Five. That's Conley Owens, Roger Berry, and Jim Pallady.
Second his motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Giesling, to reappoint three members to the Emergency Service District Number Five Board of Commissioners for one-year terms ending December 31st, 2019. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Item number six, consider and take action to appoint a new member to the Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Seven located in Precinct Three. Commissioner McCam?
This is Emergency District Number Seven, North Athens. This is a new member, Randy E. Powell. He's here today. If you look through your packet, he is, his credentials are impeccable, and I think he'll make a good member on ESD Number Seven.
Any questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Powell, for your volunteering to assist. These boards are very important to not only us and the administration of the county, but also the citizens they cooperate with. Thank you. We have a motion?
Yes, I move that we appoint Randy E. Powell to a two-year term on ESD Number Seven.
Second his motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Giesling, to appoint Mr. Randy E. Powell to the Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Seven, and I will ask, is this for a two-year or one-year?
This is two-year.
For a two-year term, ending...
Twenty, December 31st, 2020.
December 31st. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you.
Item number seven, I'm going to ask the court to pass on this. This were the two lots in Cherokee Shores. Myself and Commissioner Tulli had discussed this, and we asked that we just pass over this today. Let's see, item eight is public hearing that's to be held at 9:20. It's to discuss the determination of a speed limit of 35 miles an hour on County Road 3814 located in Precinct Three. We'll need to take action to enter into that public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I move, we move into a public hearing for the, take action on speed limit 35 miles an hour, 34, 3814.
Second his motion.
Motion by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tulli, to move into public hearing. All those in favor? At this time, we are now in the portion of the meeting where we can have a public hearing for anyone wishing to speak to the issue of setting of a speed limit on, of 35 miles an hour on County Road 3814. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this? Yes, sir, if you would, please come forward and state your name and give your address.
My name is Bobby Everett. Address is 38, on 3814, 8806, and I'm the one that requested this speed limit. You need a reason, what discussion do you want?
No, sir, you, this is an opportunity for you to, to either speak for or against, so...
Well, the nature of the road, which is actually in good shape, is just not worthy of speed limits above 35 miles an hour, and some places not even that. And a lot of good people on that road, and I know them, and I see them, and they just need a reminder that the speed limit is 35 miles an hour and not 50. And remember, my family actually got broadside, he come out of driveway, it's a dangerous drive, entrance is a hill, and when you come over, if you're doing 35, you're going to do good to avoid anybody, and you can't see people coming. So that was my personal reason, but also, I realize that a 35 mile an hour speed limit's not going to cause people to, all people to obey that, but if the law's there, it's a reminder, and so, also, it's a matter of legal fault. If someone does get hit, and they couldn't help it, they couldn't save them, I've had experience with that.
Yes, sir. Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Everett.
Do you have his information? Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, well, with that, I will ask the court for a motion to close public hearing.
I move we close public hearing.
Sorry, Joe. Excuse me.
Motion by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Giesling, to close public hearing. All those in favor? Item nine, consider and take action to set a speed limit of 35 miles an hour on County Road 3814 located in Precinct Three. Commissioner McCam?
Yes, as he stated, this is a county road off of, off of 1616, connects with another foreign market road. It's one of those older county roads, it's, you know, the right of way is not sufficient, fence to fence, and I believe it'd be beneficial to go 35 miles an hour also. With that in mind, I move to post a speed limit of 35 miles an hour on County Road 3814.
Second his motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Giesling, to set a speed limit of 35 miles an hour on County Road 3814. Is there any other discussion or comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, Court.
Item number 10, a public hearing to discuss the closure of the western end of Old County Road, of Old Highway 85 located in Precinct Two. We have a motion to enter into public hearing?
So moved.
Second the motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Giesling, second by Commissioner McCam, to move into a public hearing. All those in favor? We have started a public hearing to discuss the closure of 421 feet of Old Highway 85 located in Precinct Two. And for the audience, this is adjacent to Highway 334 on the eastern side of Gunbarrel City. Is there anyone here that wishes to discuss? Yes, ma'am, if you would, state your name and your address for the court, please.
Kathy Daniels, 433 Old Highway 85, Gunbarrel, Maybank.
Okay.
Okay, the reason that we're asking for the closure from our home and our neighbor's home on down to the shoreline, we've had numerous problems over the last, we've been there for now almost three years, adds up next month. We've had people launching their boats, which is now breaking down that old Highway 85. We have pictures. We've also had people camping down there for the day, having barbecues. They are also using our boat dock, it's a private boat dock, they go out there thinking they can fish. We recently had, over the last few months, a couple of younger people that actually on a Sunday morning figured that they could use our neighbor's yard as a little racetrack. They were making figure eights, destroyed the property. We've had a school bus destroy our property, so there's just a lot of damages on both properties for people that just, they don't have any consideration. We've put signs to please back up, you, they can, we have two different driveways that they can use. Some of them, you know, consider the signs, and they do have the consideration to back up, others just say, well, you know, whatever, and they just turn around in both yards, and especially when there's an awful lot of rain, as you know, it can, it does a lot of damage because the ground is so soft. We've had people dumping trash, which of course, my neighbors and ourselves, we have to continually pick up after. Again, there's just numerous problems. We've had sheriff's departments out there that have come out to see, assess the damage, and they're even wondering, you know, there's no reason for these people to be down there, especially at 10. especially at 10:00, 11:00, 1 o'clock in the morning. We have cameras, we've seen all this, and, you know, all this activity from down there. So this is the reason that we're asking if we can close, again, from the last two homes on and on down to the shoreline.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Also, I just wanted to add, there's a lot of...
If you would, please state your name and your address.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Bill Pang. I live at 433 Old Highway 85. I just want to add, just, you know, there is a lot of drug activities, you know, all hours to the night. I've seen it, there's drinking beers, going there, you know, their beer cans, bottles, whatnot, so I wanted to add that also.
Thank you. Do you have their information? Is there anyone else which wishes to speak to this issue? If not, entertain a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Geislin, second by Commissioner McCam, to close public hearing. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 11, consider and take action to close the western end portion of 421 feet of Old Highway 85 road located in precinct two. I will speak to this, given the fact that it's, previously I asked for this to be put on the agenda. You've heard from the discussion here. We did receive, at our last meeting, when we set the hearing, there was a petition signed by all the affected property owners, except for one individual. In the map that you see, the majority affected by the actual closure is actually property owned by Tarrant County Regional, going up to that 323 or 25 elevation mark of Cedar Creek Lake. And they are in agreement as well with this. There was an email sent from Mr. Butler, and they had no objections to it. Be happy to answer any questions or maybe?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How is, are the property owners going to put a barricade there, or a permanent barricade? Are they going to fence it off?
That, that is their discretion, given the fact that it will no longer be county road and be private property. I would suggest to them that they work with Tarrant County Regional, given that the product, where the closure is, is on that line. I'm sure that they would assist in getting that done, because Tarrant County Regional was very, very appreciative of this action.
So basically, precinct two has just got to put a sign up, assist county maintenance ends?
Yes, sir. I assume so, sorry.
Yes, sir. Do you want this chair back?
No, 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 I'm sorry, old habits, sorry. Is there any further discussion? If not, in this particular case, county judge does have same authority as commissioners to make a motion, and since this was a continuing item from my term as commissioner, I'll make the motion that we approve the closure.
Second is motion.
Motion made by Judge McKinney, second by Commissioner Geislin, to close 421 feet of Old Highway 85 road. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, Court. And thank you all for coming to the meeting. Item number 12, receive financial reports. Do we have any financial reports? We have financials from JP2 and JP3, which will be available for review in the county clerk's office after the meeting. Item 13, consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheet.
Commissioner, I've got Nikki, my payroll coordinator here, to present that today.
I do have payroll totals for biweekly 26.
Any comments, questions?
No questions.
No. If not, entertain a motion.
Judge, I, I move that we approve payroll distribution for biweekly 26.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Geislin, second by Commissioner Thule, to approve biweekly 26 payroll distributions. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes.
And I also have the balance cash sheet for November.
Any questions concerning the balance cash sheet?
No questions.
No questions.
None.
We'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Geislin, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the account cash sheets for November 2018. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Consider and take action on submitted contracts. Do we have any contracts?
I do not, sir.
Thank you. Item 15...
Oh, I thought we were going to discuss the...
The fingerprints?
Yes.
Waiting on an update to the contract.
This contract will show it correctly, and we didn't.
Okay. Well, I saw your email, and I... More of my weekend wasted review.
Item number 15, consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits. Do we have any right-of-way permits? Item 16, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Item 17, consider and take action on payment of bills. We always have bills.
We have those. And the first that I would like to present today is for 2018, and that total is $290,011.53.
Commissioner Thomas, questions?
I do not have any questions, Judge.
Commissioner Thule?
No, sir, not at this time.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Geislin?
No questions, Judge.
Hey, here we go.
Is it waiting on there?
Pardon?
Is it waiting?
Yes. Since there are no questions, we'll entertain a motion to approve the 2018 bills.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Who, who made it?
Was it me?
Got it. Commissioner Thomas.
It's a tie. Tie goes to my right. Commissioner, uh, motion made by Commissioner Geislin, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the 2018, uh, excuse me, bills of $290,011.53. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Item passes.
I also have a set this morning for 2019, and the amount of $44,303.72.
Commissioner Thomas, questions?
No questions, Judge.
Commissioner Thule?
Not at this time.
Commissioner McCam?
No.
No questions, Judge.
Fantastic, see? Starting the year off good.
Don't, don't, don't get lulled into this, this is going to be the...
Still the holiday spirit. Entertain a motion to approve the bills.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the 2019 bills, and the amount of $44,303.72. Any further comments, discussion? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Item 18, consider and take action on any submitted plaits? No plaits. 19, open and consider bids. Fantastic. Item 20, convening to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074 regarding personnel matters, namely, review and discussion of applicants and resumes of candidates for the Henderson County human, oh, excuse me, the county human resource Looking for a motion to do that, once we get everything signed up, and a tie. Do we have a motion to convene an executive session with, say, a 15-minute delay?
So moved.
Second the motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Geislin to, and second by Commissioner McCam, to convene into executive session at 10 o'clock. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? We stand recessed until we come out of executive session.
Okay, um, we need a motion to move back in to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Giesling, second by Commissioner Thomas, to move back into open session. All those in favor? We are now to... Item 21, which is to reconvene in open session and consider and take action on personnel matters that were discussed. There's no action to take concerning this matter, so we will look forward to actually working on it in the coming meetings. We did have a request from the auditor concerning the contracts portion of the agenda, and county attorney says that he has... sees no reason why we can't reopen that and revisit it, is that correct?
The way I would say that is, under the circumstances explained to me, I would be comfortable going after revisiting that.
Okay. Anne Marie?
So on the contract for the fingerprinting system, apparently the only thing that had been changed was a name change from Henderson County Sheriff to Henderson County County Clerk, and the Morpho Trust said we could just scratch that out, put the current name in there and then forward. Contract was extended through today only, so we really needed this done today.
I have no issue, I think we should do it immediately.
I do also.
I'm good.
I feel great that I read through it and I didn't waste my time this weekend. Thank you, Anne Marie.
Okay, with that, we'll entertain a motion to approve the contract with Morpho Trust. Is that the name on it?
Idivia.
Id... Idivia, will y'all spell that for Mayor Margaret? Because that's what we...
I-D-E-M-I-A.
No?
Is that an AKA Morpho Trust?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah.
We have motion on the floor to...
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Giesling, second by Commissioner Thule, to approve the contract with, AKA Morpho Trust, with the appropriate name change, is that...
An authorization for the judge to sign.
Thank you.
I love doing that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? Item passes? Item 22, consider and take action to adjourn.